Because this came out before.
All right. Welcome to this second meeting of the fiscal year, is it 2012 or 2013?
Fiscal '13.
Fiscal '13. The second meeting for fiscal '13. We are the Melton Planning Board. I'm Alex White. I am the chairman.
Do you have a member?
Emily Ennis, member.
Yeah Duffy, member.
Michael Kelly, member.
Bill Clark, planning director.
Jean Peterson.
All right. Our next meeting is going to be on August 9th. Unless we have to meet before then to get our zoning article to the, to the.
Question. Is it going to be a special town meeting?
If there's an article, it's not a special town meeting. It is a regularly scheduled meeting for the bylaw. If there's an article, there will be a town meeting. There may be more than one article. Yes.
It's not the annual town?
No, but it is a special, it is a town meeting that is held on an annual basis.
All right.
It's not annual.
But we are, we are, the planning board has a draft article to be looked at tonight having to do with assisted living residents development and it seems quite possible that this bylaw will be submitted for consideration at the October 10 meeting. And in order to do that, we have to have a fairly complete article, which I might add, you have before you.
That's for you.
To the selectmen, delivered to the selectmen before 5:00 PM on August 9th, which is the date of our next meeting.
Right.
So we, when we get to it, we will discuss how we're going to handle that without meeting again before August 9th. All right. And then we're going to meet on August 23rd for our final summer meeting. And people can wear casual clothes to that meeting if they care to.
Thank you, sir.
I hope you have one. It's going to take you a bit longer.
All right. Now, we're going to do the minutes. And somewhere here, I have my copy of the minutes.
So we have two sets, June 28th and July 12th?
We do indeed. Why don't you say something about them while I look for them?
Well, I'm okay with June 28th, but I do have a correction on July 12th.
Ah, yes, here they are. June 28th seems to me to be perfect.
That's because you very major corrections, Alex.
Hold the phone.
I have no.
So I will move the meeting minutes for June 28th?
He wants to hold the phone.
Oh, okay. Sorry, Eddie.
June 28th is okay, Emily.
All right. You've moved for approval and I think Mr. Lynch seconded that motion.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, on the 12th, here are my suggested corrections.
Oh, you missed one of them.
All right. Put it in.
All right. So.
Thank you, Emily.
I thought you might like to be included.
I was here.
You were here.
Ah.
You have substantial changes.
Yes. So I would suggest that we just do these again and we'll consider them at our August 9th meeting.
I have something to say on July 12th.
You want to attach it to on August 12th?
What do you want to put in?
Assistant living out.
Yeah.
The last sentence.
Yeah.
Says, "Member Duffy stated that he fully supports the access road as the main connector to the proposed site." I would add the following.
And you saw what I said. "Member Duffy stated that he fully supports use of the access road as the main access to and egress from the proposed site."
Okay. I would say that he added that the access road is not, is not an approved public way and is under the control of the board of selectmen.
All right. He.
He added that the access road.
Well, how about he stated that.
The access road.
The access road.
Is not an approved public way.
Is not. Although Mr. Cronin says that it was constructed to have.
Standards.
Heavy trucks, that it really has good construction, so it could be made into a good road.
But the width isn't.
Is not an approved public way.
Right. And is under the control of the board of selectmen. But I don't think it's narrow, wide enough to be a public way for those purposes, but anyways.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
I don't think that any drainage, for example, though. I'm not sure.
Right. Well, this is why, why the, oh, I forgot to add that there had to be a significant public benefit, which of course is the improvement of the access road.
Good thing that we're talking about it later on, though.
It is indeed.
It is, though.
Put that in there. The minutes having been, having been done, we're now going to go into citizen speak, which is an opportunity for citizens having matters of relevance to the planning board to, to speak to us about them. So who wants to be heard? Welcome.
And the issue that I'm here to speak on tonight pertains to 36 Central Avenue. I raised the, the issue of parking there because I know that you, Mr. Chairman, drafted the special permit for that particular project. And it was my understanding that the parking in the back, the commercial during the day, residential at night, was supposed to be open to any business in the Central Avenue Business District, not just for 36 Central. I think it needs, that point needs clarification because I've been telling people that they can go down and park there.
Right.
And now there is a very threatening sign halfway down into the, down the roadway, about halfway before you get to the parking lot. And it states that parking for the residences and businesses at, excuse me, at Brookhill, towing enforced at all times. Unauthorized vehicles will be towed at vehicle's owner's expense. To retrieve your vehicle, contact Blue Hills Towing, 258 Willard Street, Quincy, Massachusetts, and the telephone number.
Now that you've raised that point, it does seem to me that there wasn't public parking back there.
I have to go back and check the special permit.
Because, I mean, there was barely enough parking without there being public parking, so I don't, I think that maybe their, maybe their sign is something to be, to be.
Not enforced, but threatening?
But I do believe there is shared parking in the commercial spaces along the back.
Shared with what?
There were X amount of spots that are set aside for the O'Neill Building.
Right.
But the rest of those outside spaces are shared parking for the region during the day.
I don't, I don't believe that's the case.
I remember we discussed it. What I don't remember is what we came up with. So we'd have to check the special permit.
Right. I mean, we'll read this, okay, we have an expert here.
Well, I was just going to suggest, Ned Porchman, I was just going to suggest, I was on the other side of the drafting of that special permit. I don't recall specifically what the permit says, but I think it's something, the permit was fairly clear with what was allowed, and I think would behoove the board to ask the planner to double check the permit.
Well, exactly. I'm just, I'm just from a recollection point. I don't remember putting anything in about public parking back there. So we're going to have to check it, Bill.
Okay.
You're checking it as we speak.
I'm checking it as we go, so if Mrs. Donovan keeps speaking, I might have.
All right. If you keep, if you keep going for a while, we'll have the answer.
I do know that Mr. O'Neill granted all of the O'Neill parking spots to the William Sullivan Insurance Agency in order to keep him, to keep the insurance business in the O'Neill block. I do not know if maybe other tenants of other stores and businesses at the, in the O'Neill Building are now using the additional spots there, and maybe that's why the sign has gone up. So I would appreciate you looking into it so we can have clarification.
We're looking into it as you speak.
Although we need to go on and have the answer.
Anything, anything else you want to, you want to bring to the attention of the board?
No, I don't have a particular issue.
Okay.
I'll be back.
All right. Fine. Who else would like to address the board during citizen speak? Yes?
Louise Valveras. I lived on Brookside Park for almost 50 years. I am now up at 22 Mountain Laurel Park, but I still feel that that's my neighborhood. 36 Central Avenue was supposed to landscape the strip of land along Brookhill Road on the other side of the Brook. That was supposed to have been done roughly two years ago. This year, they finally landscaped it. Well, I wish you could see it. There's a couple of hydrangea bushes, there's a couple of ferns in there, they've put down the mulch that, to stop the weeds, but there's a pile of debris beside that stucco house that's probably three feet high and 10 feet long, and they've left it there. That's been there for the past two months at least. And I want to know, we met with the Conservation Commission many times on this, and there was a whole landscape set out, what they were going to put in there. Well, the plants that they put in there are a disgrace. That's all I have to say.
No. It seems to me, Mr. Clark, that this is your bailiwick. And why don't you give us a little report on, on.
We'll have to go and look at it. I have not.
You haven't seen the pile of debris?
I missed that one.
It's been there for quite a while.
Okay.
He is, he is your point of contact.
Okay.
And, okay. And thanks. Anyone, anyone else?
I'd say.
Yeah.
I'd say it's for teacher. Good evening. My name is Susan Bartley. I reside at 34 Cliff Road, which is off Elliot Street, so I travel up and down Elliot Street on a frequent basis. I've been watching and observing the debate on the construction at the Hendry's Plant Site, and I decided to come down today to just express my dismay that there isn't going to be more open space, that we really need to consider this and to do it, you know, I know that there's all kinds of considerations, but I think that what has been in the paper lately, what has been suggested, is a simple compromise. And having an area where you can sit outside and where you're coming into town, I've lived here for a long time, I, as a child, came in and out of Milton to visit relatives on Ridge Road. That was always kind of vibrant. To have a four-foot, a four-story building there so close, I just find unacceptable. So I thought, as a voter and as a citizen, I would come down and share that with you. So thank you.
All right. We have a, when we get to that, we do have another, another plan to consider. Now, we're at that point of the meeting where the town planner is going to report on his.
Doing public hearings on scenic roads.
Ah, we're, we're at the time for the 35 Hills, the Bradley Road scenic road hearing. Requested continuance to August 9th.
Yes.
So, so continue.
To what time?
Is that what you're requesting? You want a continuance?
Yes, I'm agreed with one of the abutters to continue August 9th.
All right.
Requested the board to do that. Whatever time is available on the agenda.
That is a good question.
It's not so.
We want a time, Bill.
Can we do 6:35?
6:35.
All right. Now, 35 Hillside Street.
35 Hillside, Mr. McCarthy, come right up.
Come right up and tell us all about it.
That's all right. We, we, she might not even have to shut it up.
I want to reconstruct a wall in front of my property.
Away from there?
Oh, yeah, I'd like to.
Okay. I'll give you your answer for the other first, and we'll wait for it.
All right. We're going to, now, this is, this is service.
There are 47 onsite spaces exclusive use parking without the shared are required for the zoning. With the use of the shared parking, 24 spaces, there should be 45 to satisfy the zoning. Given, 34 parking spaces shall be provided during peak hours for the 18 residential units. 13 spaces shall be provided for peak hours for the commercial and office space. Of these 13 spaces, three shall be beaded to each owner of the three commercial condominium units that the owners, for the owner's full-time exclusive use. Therefore, there are 24 spaces shall be available, maintained, and used for shared parking. Yes, does it say public anywhere?
It says shared between the residents and the businesses.
There's nothing for the.
But we'll take, we'll take an even, even closer look at that and, and be, be involved. But I'm pretty sure that the public, actually, there is no public parking down there. Now, back to, what number?
35 Hillside.
35 Hillside Street and the reconstructed wall. The wall is in poor shape, I gather.
Very poor.
The wall, the wall in front of their house is maybe a foot tall. The issue there is the roadway, there is a 60-foot right-of-way. The roadway has an extra 15-plus feet, and I gave you the plans for this a couple of weeks ago, so that if you drove by, you could see it. And I, of course, didn't bring one tonight. That 15 feet from the wall in is marked, it is flagged, and within the flagging, there are blue flags on the trees that will stay. Any tree that doesn't have a blue flag will come out. The area is to be replanted. It's, they'll build the wall, they'll fill the back of the area so that it comes up level with what is the road, and they will replant that area. And there is a Bunny Thomas listing of plants that will be going into that area. There are a fair, fair number of trees that are coming out of there. I did go to it with our tree warden, Mr. Lane, but he's not here, so we can't, this board cannot take and take care of that for them.
Maybe he could.
He has already looked at it. He wanted it marked. I marked it for him. I marked the individual trees, and I did, we've had a plan that was submitted by the applicant, we've had a plan that was reviewed by the engineering department. The engineering department came back, stated where the line is, we put flags out there. Mr. McCarthy has agreed with those, those flag points. So what will happen is from those flag points to the wall, that area will be filled, replanted. The towns trees will be left, the ones that are, have the blue flag, stay. Anything else goes, it actually opens that area up a little bit.
If you raise the grade, is that, will the trees have wells?
They will have, the existing trees will have to have wells.
Okay. Okay. So we're going to get a communication from the tree warden as to what needs to be done there.
Yep.
And the board should drive by and take a look at the, at the site. And we're going to see who else wants to be heard on the, at the hearing, and we'll, we'll, we'll issue the decision at the August 9th meeting after we get the report at the tree ward and the engineering department. Right?
Yep.
Okay. Who else wants to be heard on 35 Hillside Street reconstruction of Stonewall? All right. Anyone can drive by and we'll see the blue flag trees are going to be saved or removed.
Saved. Trees with the flags stay.
All right. Anything that doesn't have a flag on it is going.
But will it be replanted with something else?
And there is a landscape plan which.
It's not a landscape plan, it is a.
Proposal.
It's a, it's a planting list. They didn't have, they didn't have a plan, they just have a list of what's going to be planted.
All right. So the list will be available next week. Right?
Yep.
And the tree wardens report, and the specification of what to do about the existing trees, the wells.
Yes. Yes.
And whatever the engineering department has to say. Right?
Yes.
Okay. August 9th it is. At what time?
6:45.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well.
So now we have a planning director.
Now we want our, our planning director to report on his activities.
I've been in court for the last week and a half with the Winterbine arbitration case. As required by the lease between the town and Cory Hills, we are to, we were required to go to arbitration with Cory Hills. They had their experts, we had our experts. They testified last week, Monday through Thursday, we testified Thursday, Friday, Monday, and Tuesday. And we will now have to hurry up and wait. The transcripts for the arbitration will be, take two weeks. There'll be another set of briefs in 30 days. 30 days after that, we should have a decision from the arbitrator. Who's the arbitrator? It's a retired Superior Court judge. Does he live in Milton? No, he does not live in Milton. Although there were a couple of them there while we were in there, but no, this one does not live in Milton. He's actually from Wellesley. Dover, Judge Dover. He's a Harvard grad.
Judge Dover?
Huh?
Dover.
Dover.
Oh, okay. Right. Okay.
He's very good. And other than that, I'm trying to keep you people up to date with the paperwork. There is one mistake, and that is Jean did give each one of you one of these pictures. The problem is, there are four colors. These are supposed to be the different colors because one of the questions that Mr. Duffy asked for last night, what would those decks look like if they were different colors?
Oh, right.
So you each have a different color, and if you were to switch them around, you'll all get to see what the different colors are.
Green, what color do you have?
Other than that, I have the work, I'll take them off.
Yours is white. Mine's green.
I did put together the stuff for.
Let's give them, let's give all, excuse me, let's give all these pictures to Amelie and Amelie, see if you can figure out the four, the four scenes.
I figured not. We have white, yellow, green, and another green.
We've had, you've got your assisting living draft.
Right.
And I've taken a review of it. I actually now have a second company that would like to use the same thing, and they actually meet all the same standards that you wrote for the list.
Except what about this substantial public benefit?
Well.
We're going to put that in there.
Fine. They may just come up with that.
Well.
Competition?
Yes.
Competition is what made America great.
Other than that, there's a lot going on with the 131 Elliot Street project and.
Which in two minutes, you're going to get to tell us a little bit about.
I actually, they're going to be able to tell about it themselves, right?
I hope they're going to be here, but they've only got one minute to appear.
They may be in the other room. They're in the other room.
All right.
I think you've got 15 seconds.
They've got 15 seconds, you've got 15 seconds to wrap it up.
Paperwork, paperwork, paper, and I'll go get them. Emily and I have decided that we think that, I'm going to jump on yours and take the 15 seconds from you.
Yours.
We think we should look at the master plan companies, the three of them, at the next meeting, allow us them to come in.
Okay.
We'll set up the entries. Yeah.
Okay.
You already said it. We'll look.
Okay. Now, we're at 7 o'clock. Can I see this agenda again?
Yes. Go right ahead.
We are continuing a public hearing on an application for a special permit and for site plan approval of a project at 131 Elliot Street, sometimes known as the Hendry's Project. And there are a number of developments. The most interesting or.
I think we should present.
All right. I won't steal your thunder. You can, you can tell us how the land lies.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is William McThurmond. I'm the attorney for the project. With me is Steve Carnley, developer, and Bill Fleming is our landscape architect who's here with us tonight, who have, I believe, has sent in advance his landscape plan, and I believe you also may have received a zoning analysis sent in by the architect who is on vacation concerning the zoning issues that have come up. That was dated July 19. So what I'd like to do is reassert for the board why we think we're here tonight.
Okay.
We believe that we are here tonight for the purpose of addressing whether or not this board should grant a bonus under the, under the ordinance. And in the letter that you got on the 19th from our architect, he has stated that based on his calculations and analysis of the site, his request is for a 10% bonus out of 15%. He's not asking for the full amount. So that is what we're asking for. And in support of that, since we need to meet the burden of having significant amenities to the project, in particular with the landscaping, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Fleming, unless there are any questions first, for a presentation.
Okay. Now, I just, procedurally, it seems to me that at 8 o'clock, the selectmen.
for the project, with me is Steve Conley, developer, and Bill Fleming is our landscape architect who's here with us tonight, who have, I believe, has sent in advance his landscape plan, and I believe you also may have received a zoning analysis sent in by the architect who is on vacation concerning the zoning issues that have come up, that was dated July 19. So, what I'd like to do is reassert for the board why we think we're here tonight.
Okay.
We believe that we are here tonight for the purpose of addressing whether or not this board should grant a bonus under the, under the ordinance, and in the letter that you got on the 19th from our architect, he has stated that based on his calculations and analysis of the site, his request is for a 10% bonus out of 15%, he's not asking for the full amount, so that is what we're asking for, and in support of that, since we need to meet the burden of having significant amenities to the project, in particular with the landscaping, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Fleming, unless there are any questions first, for a presentation.
Okay, now, I just, procedurally, it seems to me that at 8 o'clock, the selectmen, what is the agenda for that hearing?
At 8:30, there's a discussion of the 131 building, which is selectmen.
All right.
Do we have until 8:30?
So they're gonna have a discussion?
They're gonna have a discussion on this building.
And what does the agenda say the discussion's going to be about?
It says discussion of the 131 Elliot Street.
All right.
Do we go up there too?
I'm leaving that to the chairman.
I don't, I haven't received any invitation from the selectmen to go up there, so it seems to me that anyone who is, do they want you to be up there, Bill?
There was no discussion to that, I know there's going to be some legal proceedings, and I don't know, I realize that Mr. Conley wants to be there, so I would suggest that we get as far into this as you can tonight, so that he can get out of here by quarter of-
Quarter of eight? At 7:45, our TV coverage is going to end, and the TV coverage of the selectmen's meeting is going to begin.
It'll pick up at 8 o'clock upstairs.
You mean, there's going to be a 15 minute-
The entirety of this meeting will be taped and played over the weekend.
Right.
So if you continue, people won't miss anything if they wind up going upstairs.
And it may be that we're going to want to send Mr. Clark upstairs to ask, to answer any questions that may be asked.
And I think it sounds like we need to be efficient with our time, so you guys can get where you need to be at the right time.
I need to go upstairs, but Bill can stay, and Bill can stay as well.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we don't need to do anything.
Fair enough, great, that's helpful.
All right, why don't you proceed, Mr. Fleming?
All right.
And let's get this set up so that the people in back can see, we, we actually, I think we all have small plans, so if you can get it so the TV camera can see it, but the people, if the rear of the room can see it also, that's, can't see it.
Too far, too far.
Otherwise it's gonna be flat.
Gotta be flat, okay, does that do it?
That's good for me.
Okay.
That's, that's gonna be pretty nice.
And we, do we have a few extras of these?
I have a small one.
Seems to me I have a-
I'm gonna do a small one.
No.
Well, I mean, if we have extras, but I would keep it for yourself.
We'll use that one too, we'll keep that one, I have a pretty good.
Okay.
All right, introduce yourself, tell us where you work, and-
There's a mic there.
And here's the mic.
Yeah.
And can you lift that, do we have a-
No.
You can leave it?
Can't leave it down here.
All right, well, just speak into it as best you can.
Yeah, you can adjust the-
Yeah.
All right, my name's Bill Fleming, I'm the landscape architect on this project. The last go-around, you had a discussion with the architect of moving this facade back on this elevation along Central Ave, which allowed us to turn about 600 plus or minus square feet of open space to add to the project, which allowed for us to create a courtyard kind of setting in this area along Central Ave to engage the public off the sidewalk to come into the commercial space on the ground floor. With doing so, that engages that corner and engages Elliot Street while maintaining that prominence of this corner, so that the building maintains its prominence along the corner, and that brings you to the back, which then brings you into about, I think it's 6,000 plus or minus square feet of open space, which is gonna be used for the commercial parking in the back here, which will allow people from the parking to walk through the courtyard, and then along Elliot Street and down to Central Ave to do their shopping. Once they're down, back in Central Ave, now that we've added that 600 square feet, you're, we're allowed to be more engaged with the public on that, on that side of the building, and creates a little bit more space so that people that are shopping have an opportunity to sit outside and relax. That's basically what's going on along Central Ave with regard to that elevation. In the back here now, we still have this courtyard, more like of a park-like structure that will be utilized by the town just by people shopping from the back parking lot and going down to the stores, so it's kind of like, almost a flex space between the town and the residential community above. So it's a viable space for the town, it's gonna have, it'll be a nice park setting, and again, it'll be in addition to the town, that is, will engage this corner that's near public transportation, and will have a great opportunity for the butters and everyone else from the town to use their space when they come to shop. But that is basically the revision since the last go-around, is really adding this courtyard-like space down along Central Ave, and it's really just to engage the public more with the project. So if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Well, on your landscaping, you have a big tree and some smaller trees right in front of the commercial space next to the trolley tracks, and how will that be accessed?
Down here?
Yeah.
Also on the other side of the driveway, same thing.
But I'm thinking that this little courtyard, presumably the entrance to that commercial space will go in-
Yeah.
-from the courtyard.
Correct.
But the other little piece of commercial space needs a, an entrance.
Well, yeah, the commercial spot that's over here will be entered on this side, and then the commercial spot-
On which side?
Over on this side.
On the, on the track side?
On the corner.
We'll have to adjust that way.
Yeah, that's the entrance.
Right here.
But it's on the corner of there, that plant there will reconfigure to where the opening is.
What about on the other side of the driveway?
On the other side of the driveway, the commercial space is kind of in that back corner, there's gonna be a set of doors, I think, there, I believe, on the right-hand hand side, and straight ahead.
And what's, so, if I'm, if I'm walking down the street coming from Dorchester, and I'm walking past the building, so it's on my right-hand side, there's going to be the entry off the tracks to the commercial space there, then I'm going to pass the trees and landscaping, is that a blank wall, or are there windows into the commercial space?
Yeah, windows.
And then I cross across the driveway into the building, and then again, landscaping with windows?
Yeah.
Okay, and then I turn into the plaza?
Then you take a right into the space, yeah, into the plaza.
And the windows, the size of the windows, are they going to be regular commercial plate, large windows, I mean, are we going to have commercial display space there, or are they going to be smaller, or should I say this for when you're, when Mr. Daniels comes back?
Why go ahead?
Are there gonna be display sites?
Okay, just making sure.
I just wanted to make clear, Mr. Daniels is-
On vacation, that's why he's not here.
No, I know, I just didn't know if that was something that was easy to answer.
He is prepared to do that, but not tonight.
That's fine, I just wanted to know if it's something we can answer right away.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, and then we'll come around to the public plaza, the 600 square feet, which I assume that the new one is a cream color?
Yeah.
That we've got there?
Correct, yeah.
Then the brick there, and then, is this going to be open to the public, this, the larger courtyard there, or is that going to be blocked off for the residents, how does that work, how, is there a fence, how does that work?
It's the location for the commercials. Yeah, it's a, it's for the commercial parking spaces, for the people there to not go along Elliot Street, so they walk through that courtyard, through that park-like space to get down to the commercial buildings.
But if I didn't park there, say I came and bought a sandwich and plates and saw the nice bench under the tree, am I allowed to access that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right, that's what I'm trying to, to make sure that it's public access, that it's friendly, okay.
There'll be no gates.
I would think that the bigger space could be, I mean, you've got two paths going through it, it seems to me you could have a little paved area with one path, and provide a little more public, public access into that bigger space.
The reason for the two pathways is basically to kind of almost, it's in a way of separating the two groups, two users of this group, the commercial space is gonna be using that right, right path, the people that are either live there or are working on the, in the offices on the first floor will take that left path, it's really kind of more of a, just to direct you to where you're specifically going, from that parking lot, so that either or, don't have to go along Elliot Street.
On the corner, can you discuss the grade changes a little bit, how, I can see the stairs and all that, but from the perspective of somebody entering the businesses, can you discuss how the landscaping is working with that?
Yep, well, along Central Ave, this is gonna be ADA accessible all the way down through into here.
Okay.
Wrapping around into this kind of like small brick courtyard, and the grade, so you're gonna be below, and the street's gonna be kind of like going by like that, and so you'll be sitting, the space will be down in there, so it's kind of like more of like a private secluded space than your space on Central Ave that you, that we have, that's gonna be more kind of an open, and, you know, some more open space, and then the other spaces, we kind of, you'll have kind of a secluded feel to it just because of how you're sitting in that space when, when you're there.
And is the material change, is that just so we can see where the new space is, or are you actually proposing to change materials at that point?
Well, the materials, I think we can change at some point, it is also, it's really kind of going back to what that use area is going to be until, but we're thinking, you know, if that's kind of more of like a sandwich shop or something, we kind of want to have that like Fannie Hall marketplace feel on that side, because it's, again, it's more secluded, you could put benches with umbrellas and tables, and really kind of make that area feel not open as much to the public, I guess, and then the other side would be more engaging, and that's really the main difference with those materials there.
At one point, and this was several months ago, I wanna say it was around December-ish, but I don't remember the date, it might have been November, we saw a massing study that shifted the portion that sticks out here, the lower portion, shifted it back, which would have preserved the current plaza, did you talk about that at all, it would have meant a smaller space, we never talked about the landscape, we just saw the massing, it would, it would have meant a smaller space here, but a larger space here, and preserve the levels of the current courtyard.
That example was, Warren was supposed to present that as something that he did not want to do, for the design, I don't think it was ever followed up on.
Okay.
But I remember that you were asking for massing studies, and he thought he'd show one that he wanted to do and one that he didn't.
Okay.
I don't think that was ever discussed.
The only reason I bring it up is I've seen and heard a couple of, I've seen a couple of notes and heard a couple of people that say that they really like the current plaza, and I'm wondering if without changing your actual square footage, and just, you know, so you don't lose anything there, if we shifted the building up to allow the plaza to be retained, if that would in fact be considered a significant public amenity, and so I just throw that out there as something we ought to discuss as we look at this.
Now, other questions from the board? I think I should read this letter from Mr. Daniels, since he's not here. This is a letter from Warren Daniel, Daniel Architects, Inc., dated July 19th, to Bill Clark, Milton Town Planner. Re. Hendry's Building, 131 Elliot Street, Milton Men. Summary of Design Revisions. The design has evolved in response to concerns expressed by the Milton Planning Board. These comments incorporate all the previous design changes to the original submission in addition to the most recent changes. We anticipate producing a complete set of revised plans, elevations, and site plan upon general approval by the planning board of the current design. One, the fourth story along Central Avenue has been stepped back from the main facade by 16 feet, and matches the height and design of the three-story wing to the south. Two, the one-story extension to the three-story wing along Central Avenue has been eliminated, producing a setback of 16 feet from the remainder of the Central Avenue facade. The leading edge of the Central Avenue facade is set back from the property line by 14 feet, and the sidewalk width is approximately eight feet wide. Three, the setback at the three-story wing is 30 feet from the property line for a length of approximately 50 feet to the corner tower. The corner tower, I wonder what that is?
It's, it's that.
Oh, okay. This area will be extensively landscaped per the design of William Fleming Associates Landscape Architect. Four, this landscaped area will provide a significant public amenity to the neighborhood, and will include seating, planting, a large shade tree, and sight lighting. Five, all the public amenities will be the brick courtyard, which runs along Elliot Street, and will have seating and gathering space, and the lawn area along Elliot Street, which will feature benches and a pergola structure at the building entrance on the first floor. Six, the fourth story has been reduced by one unit, and the first story has been increased by one unit, leaving the unit count unchanged at 35. The setback on the fourth floor provides space for a large roof deck and a large two-bedroom unit with views to the north and east along the Napolit River. Seven, the business use area provided totals 8,100 square feet on the ground and first floors as compared to the 8,086 square feet required, 50% of the primary floor area of 16,172 square feet. Eight, the new FAR floor area ratio is 1.646, 58,461 square feet gross floor area divided by 35,524 square feet commercial lot area. We would ask for an FAR of 1.65, a 10% bonus over the base 1.5 FAR. The maximum allowable bonus by zoning is 15%. Nine, there are two proposed cornices along Central Avenue, one at the top of the ground floor and the commercial sign panel, and the other at the base of the third floor, which forms the base of the mansard roof. These cornices break up the building massing to a base, a middle, and a top, which are defined by their materials, brick, clavering, and roof shingles. Ten, there are 57 indoor parking spaces on two levels, and 31 outdoor spaces on the western end of the site. The total of 88 spaces provided compares to 97 spaces required, 65 residential and 32 business. This deficit may be handled by the use of Zipcar rental cars at the discretion of the planning board. Okay, any further comments from the developer? Okay, any further comments from the developer? All right, if not, well, we'll hear from the public and make rum at the table for the public. All right, now we're going to need a chair for the public.
Mr. Fleming, there's an extra one over there.
The applicant has requested a decision from the planning board as to whether or not the board should award a 10 percent FAR bonus. And I gather the applicant would like to know whether the planning board expresses general support for the building as proposed. General support means that the basic massing is approved and details of that, of the building would be worked out at further meetings. So those are the two issues which are probably primed for this evening.
Good evening, Peter Jackson, 14 Capen Street. I think I just want to, I'm not going to address all the issues that many of us have. Those have been addressed over and over again, and I imagine we'll hear more. But I think I want to make a couple of comments about the landscape plan because that was presented tonight. A lot of the elements, I think, continue to need work, and so I urge the planning board to continue its review of the landscape plan. Some of the elements I note is the, the commercial facades along Central Avenue are densely planted in front of the commercial windows with both trees and shrubs blocking the commercial windows from view from the street, which, you know, any commercial tenant wants you to be able to see the windows and displays of the windows. I like the idea of some landscaping in front there, but I think it should be lower and that, you know, it's important to keep the commercial windows open for the benefit of tenants. I know there's still a lot of details to work out, so that'll, that'll continue. The courtyard space and sidewalk on both Central Avenue and the sidewalk going up Elliot Street, I'm not sure what the materials are intended to be, they're not called out, but by virtue of the fact that they're not colored red, like the, what has been called out is brick, would lead me to believe that it's some other material. When the streetscape improvements were done at Central Avenue under that P Wed grant, there was a vocabulary of brick and concrete established for the sidewalk design, and I would anticipate that this project would continue to use the same design vocabulary as was used at that point in the rest of the district. The, what's being called patio space or plaza space in front of the building, again, in the drawing, it looks like concrete, and I think the planning board should look more closely at what materials are being proposed there. I would also suggest that the applicant be required to put in historic street lighting that matches the rest, that was put in under the rest of the district, so that this site, you know, continues that same design theme. The, I can, in a way, I feel it's premature to look at this detail of a planning plan because I'm not sure that the basic massing of the building has been established yet, and maybe that's something you'll take up yet. I continue to feel that the, what is there, the major open space on this site along Elliot Street does not serve the open space public amenity needs of the commercial area because it's hidden up the street, it's too far from the commercial frontages, and also the design of it looks very private. So it appears to me to be a private landscape to support the residential tenants rather than anything that could really be called a public amenity to support the commercial district. Just two other brief comments on the landscaping. The, the design of the buffer along Elliot Street does not meet the zoning requirements for the design of that parking lot, so that'll have to be reconsidered. And I am concerned the planning plan along the residential as between the parking lot, I think the mass of the, the amount of setback is good and a reasonable buffer can be put in there, but the species selected for that, I think the crowns of the trees are going to conflict with each other and we'll be getting a lot of deformed trees rather than nice specimen trees. I think the designer should either make it a leather green edge or a deciduous edge, but there's really not space in there to have both. And I think there should also be underplanting to those, which are not shown at this time, but I think there should be shrub and herbaceous layer as an underplanting along there. Well, I did say that was all, but I have one more comment. In the plaza area on Central Avenue, there is a tree shown. At the last meeting, there was shown kind of a raised planter with some benches around it, and I don't know if that continues to be the proposal or if that doesn't. It didn't make sense as a proposal to me, so I'm not sure what's being proposed here. But there's inadequate space in that location for a major deciduous tree along with the street trees that are planted there. There's just not enough crown space to have the two street trees that are shown plus a major deciduous tree in that corridor, that, on that plaza that really will have a chance to really grow and to be any significant tree. Thank you.
What is, you've mentioned the parking area, there are setbacks required for this parking area?
There is a buffer required. There is a buffer required in the zoning units, not provided yet.
I think it's under Section 7.
Section 7, yes.
Oh, okay.
The PUD bylaw references that parking's got to be designed in accordance with Section 7 of the zoning bylaws, and this parking doesn't comply at this point.
We called that out in one of the earlier memos.
Okay, well, we'll take a look. Who else?
I first of all want to thank everybody who's been involved in this process for their extended and extensive consideration of all of the issues. I'd like to thank Mr. Conley for his attempts to meet some of the requests of neighbors. I feel, I agree totally with what Mr. Jackson said, that this, as it stands now, this appears to be a private, the open space appears to be private. It's not welcoming, it doesn't have an effect on people on Central Ave. And having enjoyed the outdoor area at Hendry's years ago, I would really hope that you would be able to find a way to retain perhaps some of those beautiful stone walls and terracing closer to Central Avenue and have the open space on that side, which could then produce a neighborhood meeting welcoming spot. The impression of this plan, I think, is that this space is for the tenants, and I would feel uncomfortable sitting there. So I thank you for your efforts, and I hope you can go a little bit further and bring it home.
Peter Mullin, 19 Gaskins Road, town meeting member, precinct three. I want to report on something from last planning board meeting relating to this. Several members of the board suggested that the applicant should meet with the neighbors and see if they could address any of the concerns that neighbors have raised. The neighbors have had two meetings since then. One was on July 11th with Mr. Conley at the library. That was a small group meeting. There were four people from the neighborhood, three architects and myself. Mr. Conley was there with his architect, and Tom McGrath, who used to be the architect on the project for Mr. Conley, were there. I think we had a candid, frank, maybe even productive meeting, although it was left that he was going to make, he thought he would make some changes in the, in the plan and submit them to the board. We also scheduled a meeting that was going to be an open, public meeting to hear from neighbors and people in general. Mr. Conley, when I first raised that with him, said he wasn't sure he wanted to go to such a meeting, he wanted to think about it. Eventually, his position was that he didn't want to attend that meeting, that the, if people had concerns about the project, they should raise them here in the planning board public hearing. We did go ahead with that meeting on the 18th at the library. There were 20 to 25 people there, a number of people expressed concerns. I sent that in an email to Mr. Clark, and I think at least some members of the board that have email addresses, I wanted to make that part of the public record. With regard to tonight, I would urge the vote, the board, to address the issue of the FAR bonus tonight and to give Mr. Conley direction with regard to the FAR bonus. As I understand the voting requirements for this application, it requires an 80 percent vote in order for a special permit to be approved. I also understand that only four members of the board are eligible to vote on this application, and therefore, for a special permit to be adopted, it will require the vote of all four voting members. Therefore, the converse is also true. If at least one of you says that you're not willing to award the FAR bonus that's being requested, then presumably this special permit would not be issued, would not be adopted. While you shake your head, Emily, but I don't understand why.
We have a letter from town council. Any vote made in the affirmative absolutely requires four votes in order to pass, but the planning board could still allow a special permit without the bonus being awarded.
That's correct.
Yes, so I just wanted to clarify that.
That's the point I'm making.
Yes.
If at least one of you says tonight to Mr. Conley, "I will not vote for this proposal that you have in front of me, this concept, which requires a FAR bonus of 10 percent." If somebody says to the applicant tonight that they will not support that, then the applicant can either, you know, seek a final vote on the application and have it fail, or they can make changes to the application.
That is correct, yes.
And I would urge you to make that vote tonight, to say that tonight, and get changes in this proposal. With regard to the display...
There is, of course, a, I remember that letter being, unfortunately, I didn't bring it with me.
I didn't either.
But it did seem to me that there were, he said, "Well, when you're taking procedural votes along the way, a majority would suffice," although obviously, when you get to the final, final...
No, it's not what he said. What he said is any vote taken along the way that is couched in the affirmative must have a four-fifths vote, or in this case, all four. Any vote taken along the way couched in the negative can pass with three votes.
Well...
That's because the special permit requires four votes to pass, so you cannot have a positive motion pass with only three votes to get to the final motion. And I can get you the exact language if you need it. But any, so if somebody tonight, for example, were to move that the FAR bonus be granted, it requires four votes to pass. If somebody tonight were to move that the FAR bonus be denied, it requires only three votes to pass.
That is my understanding, so that if there's an affirmative motion tonight to award an FAR bonus, that it would require four votes, and if there's one no vote, the matter does not pass.
Correct.
So if there's a motion to deny the bonus, it would take...
Three votes to pass.
Well, it seems to me...
That seems remarkable.
Well, I think it's invalid, actually.
Unfortunately, town council isn't here, and I didn't bring the letter, but it is...
I don't believe that that's what he said.
All right, I don't think, I don't think we're going to do it that way.
Okay.
But it never made sense to me.
It makes perfect sense if you explained it to you.
Essentially, what you're trying to do, what Mr. Conley has asked for and what you're trying to do is to give him some guidance with regard to designing his building. He's saying, "Before I go to the effort of coming up with detailed plans and things, tell me whether or not what I'm proposing here is acceptable." You're trying to give him some guidance, and I'm suggesting to you that you should give him the guidance, and the guidance should be, "We are not willing to give you an FAR bonus for the building that you are proposing." That it's too big, it's too dense, and it does not have the public amenity, amenities plural, which are required by this zoning bylaw. If you look at that plan over there, there is no public amenity there. There just isn't. The zoning bylaw requires that there be significant public amenities, plural. There isn't anything there. Some of those trees that are on that board are public trees along the street. They're not even being provided by the applicant. In the letter that you read from the architect, the only mention of public amenities, I believe, is in item four, and he's referring back to item three, all right? Item three says, "The setback for the three-story wing is 30 feet from the property line for a length of approximately 50 feet to the tower corner." I would suggest to you that that's 1,500 square feet. It's not 6,000 square feet. "This area will be extensively landscaped per the design of William Fleming Associates Landscape Architect." It's then in the next paragraph that he talks about, "This landscaped area will provide a significant public amenity to the neighborhood and will include seating, planting, a large shade tree, and site lighting." I don't think so. It's not a significant public amenity. There is, the zoning bylaw requires, if you look at the bylaw, in page 32 of the bylaws, it's, I believe it's section J4B, where it talks about floor area ratio...
J3.
No, J4A.
J4B, floor area ratio.
Yeah.
Shall not, it provides, that it shall not have a floor area ratio in excess of 1.5, all right? Then it grants the planning board some discretion. It says, "If the planning board determines that the area of the lot is the same as the qualifying lot area," all right, that's one thing you have to find.
Actually, Peter, correction, you left out part of the sentence, that's important. It's the area of the lot in the business district.
Right, and I don't think anybody's suggesting that that first condition is not met.
That condition has been met.
All right, it then says, "And," so this is a second thing that you have to find. It then says, "And," so this is a second thing that you have to find, "and that a development will preserve, if feasible, or replace in kind, one or more significant natural features on the site." That's the second thing that you and your discretion have to find. Where is the replacement in kind on that plan? Do you see any replacement for the oak tree? I don't see it. Then it requires a third thing, "and the plan has to provide significant amenities to the public," and then it provides that you can award a bonus of up to 15 percent greater. This doesn't -- just doesn't meet the requirement of the zoning bylaw. There is nothing that's being shown as replacement for the tree, which is required, and there's nothing that's being shown that's a significant public entity. Let me suggest to you that if you reject this tonight, the developer will have to modify his plan to address those concerns. The whole reason for allowing an FAR bonus is because it's going to allow a bigger building. And the trade-off, which Town Meeting authorized, is if you're going to do that, you have to provide public amenities, and you have to either preserve natural resources or replace them. And if those things aren't done, the public doesn't get the trade-off that it bargained for in Town Meeting. I'd urge you to vote no. Thank you.
You know, I just -- I agree that the design is -- this whole area, the big area with the two sidewalks going through it is not designed to be a public amenity. It really needs to be designed to provide public amenities. I mean, it does look like a private compound, and that's not what it's supposed to be. You know, there's space for doing what you're saying, but this, I have to agree, doesn't do it.
And I would suggest to you that the only way that the developer is going to be motivated to address that is if you vote no in town. If you vote no, he can amend it, he can come back to you with a proposal that complies.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Mr. Clark helped me out with the bylaw here. The bylaw, and this is particularly interesting to me since I've been called, I can't vote on this. The bylaw doesn't necessarily say four votes. It says four of five. In my mind, that's a ratio. It's proposing a ratio, proportion of the vote.
No, I think he's right. It is, he needs all four votes.
Well, the bylaw states four of five.
I know, but the special permit statute says--
Four of five.
Says four of five.
And since there aren't five to vote, you can't have four of five.
Yes, you have to have all four. State statute--
I think the Town Council should look at that.
We did. We had Town Council--
He has, and I'm looking for the letter right now.
He ruled that it has to be four--
He indicates in the letter that he realizes that there are not five people to vote.
Yes. He does, but he's saying that when you proceed with a four-personed Board, you do so well-knowing that if you're going to get relief. In fact, this often happens at special permit hearings where there's a member missing. The Board says, "Well, you can wait or you can take your chances."
Well, again, that's different. That's a member missing as opposed to a member not being allowed to vote. That's a member's own discretion.
I mean, in this particular case, the applicant is always, in order to get a full Board, can restart the process. And it would be quicker, I think.
The way it's written, it just says to me that it's a ratio. It doesn't say four votes, it says four of five.
It's assuming that if you go back to the state statute, it's written slightly differently, but it is four members of a five-member Board have to vote.
We've got the statute--
You don't have a five-member Board.
We've got -- we do have a five-member Board. You simply can't vote.
You're not a voting five-member Board.
But, Mike, it's not, that's not the reason you're not allowed to vote. The reason you're not allowed to vote is because there's another--
No, I realize that.
But I'm not sure everybody else does.
But again, a ratio, if you say 80 percent of the people have to vote for it, but 20 percent of the people can't vote, then that's really 100 percent.
It doesn't, yeah, but it doesn't give the ratio, and just so other people--
What it does, it says four of five is a ratio.
Just so other people understand why you can't vote, there's a state law that says a Planning Board member can only miss one meeting out of a public hearing. And unfortunately, because you came on board, through no fault of your own, a year and a half in, that's why you can't vote. It's not that the Planning Board has decided something. It is, it's a state law that you can only miss one meeting.
That is unfortunate.
And in fact--
If, wait, is viewing the tapes of viewing--
That's part of that law, but you're still allowed to miss one meeting. That's why we had to call you in a couple of weeks back.
Because you couldn't--
Because you'd already missed one meeting.
If I was a congressman or a senator, I could vote.
Yeah, exactly. The rules for Planning Boards are slightly different, so it also means that none of us can miss more than one meeting, or suddenly, we're down to a three-member Board and in even more trouble, so.
Again, and I'll drop it at this, it should have been written, "He's four votes, period," not four of five, because if you have a situation where you're not allowing a member to vote, it would be impossible to have four of five, because there aren't five to vote.
Well, that allows one member to recuse himself, basically, and still have--
But again, that's a discretion for a member to recuse himself, but I have no discretion.
Actually, it's state law.
State law, not Town--
Not discretion.
Four of five.
Four of five, state law.
Well, again, I think it's written as a ratio.
Trust me. I took a day and a half of my personal vacation time already on this to work out the legal ramifications of Town Council. It is, unfortunately, all four members.
It is, it is true.
Yeah.
It is true, Mike, and--
And the lawyer should get their math straight, because you're having a ratio. Four of five is a official ratio.
Well, I understand, I understand, but you know--
You can't have a ratio of 100 percent.
Believe me, it would make our lives so much easier.
The problem is, if I were writing it again, would leave out three five. I'd leave out a five.
Then you'd have what you've said, Alex, the look of the clock.
It's 10 of 8, we're no longer being televised, so that means--
We're being taped.
We're being taped. All right, now, where were we?
Do we have any more people who want to speak?
We were listening, we want more people to speak.
If they want to.
If they want.
Well, Alex, are you saying that--
Let Mr. Mills speak.
Yes, welcome. How can we--
Good evening.
How could you elucidate these matters?
Well, I'm not sure if I could elucidate specifically what you're addressing, but elucidate what I want to address, how's that? Keith Mills, 39 Hawthorne Road, and then Street Event, 25 Central Avenue. Can we have a meeting without Margaret? It doesn't seem right, and I'm not happy her here.
Turn around.
All right. Okay. Mike, even I didn't seem like we were the right meeting.
Oh, as usual.
Perfect, okay, good. I'm here to kind of throw my voice behind Peter. I would agree that I don't think this project qualifies for the bonus. I would respectfully request you not to vote for the bonus. My other concern was, is, you know, at our last meeting, you know, you suggested pretty heavily that, you know, Steve show up or please come and talk to, you know, the people from the Columbine Cliff and, you know, the other surrounding neighborhoods, and he didn't. And I just think it's a responsibility for someone who wants to develop the area to sit down and talk with us, whether they agree with us or not agree with us, to at least come and talk to us. And the fact that that didn't take place, to me, just wonders, where do we go from here? And, you know, I think at some point in time, this project will be, you know, fixed the way that it needs to be done, and it will be moved forward, whether it's Steve or somebody else to do it. I mean, we'd like to see a project be done there. But I think it's also important for dialogue between developer and neighbor and fellow business people in order to try to work towards something, to understand. And again, I think we can respectfully agree to disagree, and there's nothing wrong with that. But to have no dialogue, to have no one come in and talk to us, I just think sends the wrong message. And I would urge, again, that we'd love to continue to try to talk with them and try to figure things out. But also, based upon what Peter talked about, you know, that we'd still, or that I would still say that I would respectfully request for you to deny the bonus, but I would also say is, it would be nice for Steve to find out, you know, today, what's going on, so he can figure out how he wants to address the project.
We've got two people, okay, good.
I didn't know he was coming up. Once again, Louise Voevers, formerly of Brookside Park now at 22 Mountain Law Road. I firmly agree that this building is much, much too large. It's not what we need in the area, and I urge the Board to vote no on this project.
Adam Gilmore, 22 Valley Road, and I'd like to just in general support what Mr. Mullen expressed. And that for me, it's two core issues. One is the height of the building along Central Avenue, and the other are the public amenities. To me, the success of the project needs to connect the commercial space with the sidewalk and the public. So any discussion of significant, if we define significant public amenity as plaza or open space, it needs to be at the corner or in the neighborhood of, shouldn't be discussed around the green space currently shown. I agree, it's too private a space. The other is the height along Central Avenue. I feel like it's the burden of proof from the developer to explain why. It needs to be more than 25 feet. There's a lot of discretionary language in the zoning regarding the height, and I haven't heard a salient argument yet as to why it should exceed that 25-foot wall over Central Avenue. And I would urge the Board to vote tonight on the FAR bonus and to vote no.
Good evening, Cheryl Teguyes, 660 Canton Avenue. I would like to add my concurrence to what Peter Mullen, Peter Jackson, and Adam Gilmore have said this evening, and Keith Mills for that matter. I have consistently, I think for over a year, expressed concerns about the scale of the building on Elliot Street, about the corner and the sort of openness and how it engages a commercial district and engages the bicycle path and the T station. I think the landscaping plan that's proposed tonight, as Peter said, goes against what you want to encourage as the interaction there. So I, again, urge you to vote no on the FAR bonus. I think there's been a lot of talk and very little change in the design proposal, and perhaps a vote will start to move this along in a way that takes into consideration many people's expressed concerns.
Good evening, my name is Andrea Palmstrom. I'm at 151 Elliot Street, and I, too, would like to propose that you do not vote in favor of the FAR. Bonuses, to me, is a reward for past behavior, and living on Elliot Street during the wintertime, the premises in front of Hendry's is not maintained, not shoveled. The Elliot Street residents had to walk in the street during snowstorms in fear of their lives. And in addition, you know, the oak tree was cut down. Also concerned about the increased traffic that would result as a result of the building, and concerns that the Elliot Street would be used as a pass-through to 138 to gain access to 128. And the amenities that we see on Elliot Street that we would be gaining is the traffic congestion. And somebody, I believe this gentleman in the blue shirt, referred to this plan as giving it a Faneuil Hall marketplace feel. I grew up in Boston, and if I wanted that feel, I'd still be living in Boston, but I moved to Milton because of, you know, the non-congestion and the nice feel that Milton has. And if that were to be built in accordance with how they're proposing, that's going to be taken away.
Ellen DeNoyer, 83 Capeman Street. I'm a member of the Columbine Cliff Neighborhood Association Board and a Town Meeting member and an architect. And I've spoken before about the concerns that I and others have about the project. I think that it's important to note that what Mr. Conley is proposing assumes all of the discretion in his favor. There are several discretionary items in the zoning, and he has assumed them in his favor. I think that, as Adam Gilmore mentioned, the burden of proof is on the developer to show why those are in the public interest, why he's entitled to them, and I don't believe that that has happened. Being a developer, you know, that's his prerogative to assume that he can get all the discretion that's available. But the Board has a responsibility to the public, and I think that they really need to clearly go through the points in the zoning and determine for yourselves whether the discretion is warranted. And I believe that it is not warranted. I believe that a significant public amenity is more than a tree and some benches. I think that when you look at the scale of the public areas that are being provided, public open space, relative to the scale of what's there now, they are very small and inadequate, and they are certainly not significant. And we had, when we met with Mr. Conley, some of the things that we talked about were concerns about that small courtyard on Elliot Street near the corner. I would really like to see a section drawing through that courtyard, because it is very narrow and very tall, and when you're standing in that courtyard next to the stairs, the building wall is going to be next to you, and the rest of the plaza to the west is going to be above your head. So you're going to be in a little canyon, and I'm very concerned that the scale is too small with the grade changes, and it is just not a significant public amenity. And the space on Central Avenue, similarly, as Peter Mullen pointed out, most of those trees are existing public trees, and for the developer to plant one tree is not a significant public amenity. So I think that it's really the responsibility of the Planning Board to look at the zoning, which, as you know, was written with considerable care, and to determine if there's a significant public amenity, and I think the answer is no. I'm also concerned about the setbacks. We have not seen a drawing that, again, complies with the base zoning, which says the third and fourth stories must be set back from the second story, sufficiently so as to maintain a scale appropriate to the nearby residential area. I think you've heard from many people concerns about the scale of the building not being appropriate to the residential area, and that these setbacks, again, the zoning says, shall meaningfully reduce the appearance of the bulk of the building above the second floor. Again, a lot of concern about the bulk of the building, and we have not seen a drawing that shows those setbacks. The Planning Board may grant an exception if the building is set back to meaningfully reduce the appearance of the bulk of the building. I have not heard anyone argue that there is a meaningful reduction in the appearance of the bulk of the building. Similarly, building walls shall not rise in an uninterrupted vertical plane more than 25 feet. Setbacks above that height shall be employed and shall be visually prominent. And again, there's a discretion here for the Planning Board can grant an exception to that upon finding that a greater uninterrupted rise is architecturally appropriate and does not cause an unacceptable appearance of bulk in the building. I have not heard anyone argue that those discretionary items should be granted. So again, I would suggest that the Board, it is time for the Board to vote against the bonus, and that the building really needs to be redesigned in accordance with the base zoning. zoning, not in accordance with every piece of discretion that is available. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Charles Tsekaras. I'm an architect and urban designer, and I'm not a member of this community. I live in Winchester, Mass., and I'm not here representing myself. In 2005, there was a ULI Technical Assistance Program, so-called TAP program, that the ULI members conducted for the town of Milton, and I chaired that. So I'm familiar with the area. I'm familiar with the intent of our report, which, as I understand it, as I read it, you translated a lot of that information into a new zoning regulation. The zoning regulation's purpose is to, when it's finally built, to represent some of the objectives that were in that report. So if I'm out of order, please tell me, because I am not a resident of Milton. I've been the chairman of a planning board in Winchester for people from out of town.
Well, I'm sure that you welcome distinguished visitors from time to time.
Well, thank you. The only reason I'm really here is because this evening, when I heard one person say that the purpose of tonight's meeting is to give an approval so that the developer can continue to do the more detailed aspects of the project. And so I expected this evening to see more drawings than a plan. I expect to see vertical elevations, perspectives, and the ones that I have seen do represent a wall of four stories high. And the Urban Land Institute represents the real estate community, so I'm not here to be critical of the architect or the developer's plans. I'm really here to simply say that the intent of our report, and I think the intent of your zoning, is to recognize that this business district is a very small intimate-scale place. So if the two-story element could be developed around the perimeter and then with setbacks, it would really be very, very appropriate. I also recognize that there's a cost attributed to that, that you build a three-dimensional box, it's much less expensive, and I appreciate that. But the fact is that, for the sake of the community, for the long-term 50-, 100-year time span of the community, it seems to be worth it. And the other objective is the, we mentioned in that report, public amenities. And if that courtyard were, in fact, I think it was your suggestion, pushing the sound back so this expands and that is reduced somewhat, it seems that that would be a mechanism, especially if you're on the corner, for the business district.
Well, pushing back the little projection in towards the interior of the site.
I agree. Reducing this size and expanding that more of the public.
How far do you think it should be pushed?
I would like to have Mr. Conley and his architect to serve.
What, in feet?
I could certainly -- I don't know in feet because I'm really not familiar with the scale of that. But it's just that there has to be a critical aspect, because one idea is that coming down that is that that could represent kind of a rival point for this whole business district. And it's really an important factor. So those are the two concerns that I have as a third-party observer, really not as a resident. I have to make sure that you understand.
But someone who has spent a day in the area.
In fact, in 2003, we had another TAP, and that was the one that we suggested that you hire a town planner, that you do a mixed-use development here, and that you change the zoning in order to accommodate a mixed-use development. And we did. So that was in 2003. And then in 2005, we came back. And I'm just familiar with this area, and so I'm interested as an urban designer. I can't help but be curious. What prompted you to show up here tonight? I'm sorry? What prompted you to show up here tonight? I had some friends who are architects who live here, and they alerted me that this was going to take place tonight.
Can you try me to mention my name?
Sorry?
You speak into that mic.
I'm sorry. So my purpose in being here really is represent that group that came down, and what really compels me is that, at that time at least, and this is 2005, I didn't realize it was seven years ago, there was a lot of general agreement amongst many, many people in this community. We had a public hearing upstairs in that large hall, and there were probably 40, 50, 60 people there. And there was a minority who was against the idea of a mixed-use development and intimate scale, distinct minority. There was a great vast majority that were really in favor of it, just conceptually. And this isn't going to satisfy that concept, that's all. So I'll go back home. Now, I think, I recognize faces around here from 2005, so you've been around here for a while.
Yeah.
I saw you earlier this evening when we came in.
Well, thank you.
But that's really my purpose.
I just have one question, producer.
Certainly.
The recommended zoning with this part of the report was 1.5.
Oh, no, I'm not talking about that. I'm really talking about the configuration of the building. So I'm not talking about that, the FAR. I'm talking about how to accomplish.
We're here to talk about the FAR.
I know that, and that's why, if you think of my comments out of order, say so.
Well, also, the configuration of the building because the general idea of the building is on the table.
Yeah. So I know at tonight's meeting, just when I sat down, I heard you say that you narrowed the focus of this meeting, and that's why I'm concerned that whether my comments are over.
I didn't narrow the focus of the building, which the agenda was set up last meeting.
Oh, fine. I wasn't here, so I just wasn't here.
Okay. But the point of the matter is, the reason this building is smaller is because the 1.5 zoning calculation is based on the entire lot, including the residential lot. Is that right?
I'm not sure. I haven't done, this is seven years ago.
But you were directly.
No, I am second.
Can we recall now?
I can't recall.
Okay.
But I was part of that, and I always thought.
However, I can do my research and come back next.
I always thought that it was 1.5 of the business district area. That's what I always thought. And that's how I wrote the zoning.
You wrote the zoning like that, with the report based on the entire lot, and you wrote the zoning restricted into the business district.
All right. Well, let's see if Senator Joyce can solve this.
However, I think it's important to recognize that, I have a feeling that if I were a resident of this community, I would much rather have a setback to the building, a larger public amenity.
Push that down the street.
And even increase the height of the building beyond the existing zone, which would require variances and so on.
We're going to watch the footage.
So it's kind of a sticky work.
This is hot enough.
All right. Thanks for coming in.
Remember, you're building for 50 years minimum.
Senator Joyce, welcome to the Milton Planning Board.
Thank you. I hope it's my first, last, and only time here, although you look like you have a lot of fun. So thank you very much for all of the time and volunteer efforts that you make on behalf of the town, which helps make it the number-two town in America. We think perhaps number-one. But seriously, I know you've spent just extraordinary amounts of time on this issue, as have some very good neighbors, trying to protect the interests of the town, the character of the town. I know the developer wants to see a project and wants to get to yes, and I think we all want to get to yes. So I have a polite suggestion, which may be of some benefit, and that is that the town apply for a MassWorks grant. The application is due on August 27th. MassWorks grant is a compilation of a number of different programs, one of which formerly was called a P-WED grant, a Public Works Economic Development Grant. It helps secure $1 million for this very area, and you'll recall that, you know, we had a terrific plan developed by Beta Engineering, and we got another $1 million for Milton Village. Alex, I remember having a conversation with you when I, by chance, ran into you in the street and said, "Only in Milton could World War III erupt over either a parking space or in Milton Village instance, it was over a traffic light." And I think, and it's funny, when you look at the P-WED grant, that the intent is investment of $1 million public dollars, which then leverages or incents private investment, and in fact, coupled with the rezoning that we did at town meeting, it's clearly worked in this instance. We see a revitalized Central Avenue business district, and we have some wonderful new shops and another one to come, and soon a new development. So it has worked. I couldn't help but note when, Billy, when perhaps folks in public office overstepped the planners and vetoed the bump-out across the street, now you go by and you say, "I wonder if they wish they had let the professionals have their way," because you see the plate is booming with, you know, 10 chairs of patrons, and wouldn't it be good to have that across the street? But in any event, I met with the person who's in charge of this program for the state, and we met right there at the plate. And we have very favorable signs foreshadowing the likelihood of success of such a grant. And the idea is, it has to be for the public benefit. It cannot be for the private developer's benefit. But the idea is if the state could step in, take care of some of the public amenities, perhaps some of the infrastructure, relieve the developer of some other cost or mitigation that may be incurred, that would then enable him to reach agreement with the neighbors who want a project of a different scale. So I just offer that as a possible solution, and if the town is so inclined, I would, you know, suggest getting in touch with Beta Engineering that has all this information from the prior grant. You're probably only talking about $2,500 or so to prepare another application. I would ask, Bill, that you consider as part of that application reinstating that bump-out across the street. But whatever the experts decide, and perhaps it's a way that we can get to yes for this development, address my neighborhood's concerns and the planning board's concerns and protect the character, but still allow the developer to make a reasonable profit. So just one possible solution.
Two things. First of all, Senator, I understand that you've had a great deal of success getting MassWorks grants. I believe Randolph has had a few that you've been instrumental in helping them out with. So having your opinion on this and whether or not it's viable option is very helpful. Two, I also note that, because I've prepared an application for MassWorks grant before, that having a public-private partnership goes a long way to letting the state know how serious the community is about the grant, and being able to demonstrate that is very helpful. So this is a great suggestion.
Thank you. This is available online, and if you look at the criteria that the state looks at, this meets virtually all the criteria. I mean, it's transit-oriented development, it's smart growth, it's mixed-use, it's really all the things that we want to see in revitalizing our local business districts. So it's a possible way to help you to get to yes while still protecting the character of the town. So.
Thank you.
Well, yes, thank you.
Margaret Donovan, 51 Central Avenue. I was a little bit concerned about the neighborhood meeting that wasn't, and that was the one that Mr. Mullen referred to, in which he said that the developer did not show up. However, it was my understanding from the last meeting with the planning board that there was to be a neighborhood meeting, not two. And while I, Louise O'Vares, as she pointed out, and I have been here since day one two years ago, and it really wasn't until the tree came down that people came out of the woodwork to come before this meeting. Frankly, it was getting very lonely up until then. I have to say that I am very pleased with the fact that people are now coming here before you, and they have had some great, great ideas, great architectural ideas. Of course, you know from day one that I think this plan is an absolute monstrosity. However, the four appointed people for that small meeting in which Mr. Conley showed up, he showed up for what he considered to be a neighborhood meeting. No one told him he had to be here twice. I saw people, I was at the second meeting, I was not one of the self-appointed four. And at the second meeting, I saw neighbors, abuddits, let's call them what they are. There's a difference here between neighbors, residents, and abuddits. And the abuddits are the ones that are going to really be budded when this project gets going. Ask one who knows who's gone through it. There were abuddits there from Elliot Street, right across the street from that building. They thought they were going to have an opportunity to meet with and maybe address their problems with Mr. Conley, but Mr. Conley wasn't there, and I don't blame him for not being there. He was supposed to go to one neighborhood meeting. I would hope that these residents and neighbors continue to work with those of us who have been here from day one. There are issues that those abuddits wanted to address that were not addressed because the developer was not there. And of course, you may say, well, some of the things that they wanted to address, such as the demolition of the building and the impact it's going to have on that neighborhood, they didn't have the opportunity. So the question is, and I don't, I see one person here tonight, I saw others here, others at that other meeting. There is a language barrier between, when English is not your first language. It is very difficult for people, particularly those who live on Elliot Street, to come up and speak before this board. It can be intimidating. I mean, again, lawyers that can't do math, they don't mind coming up to speak, I being one of them, but for a neighbor to come up and try to speak before you, it can be frightening. I have my notes from the July 28th meeting, 2010, of the issues that were raised back then, and demolition was one of them, and the scale in the site was another one. Now, parking, it's nice that the neighbors who live far away and can come down and enjoy the public amenities, where are they going to park? Because that is now becoming a huge nightmare in that small district. And in fact, I noticed the plate, and they're doing a nice little business, and I saw Mr. Joyce's car parked right in front of my house. But with all due respect to Mr. Conley, the plates people, and one time I went down there and I counted at least eight working there, they are parking in his lot. Now, I used to be concerned about a tree bridge coming down. I supported him on that because I know that when they were building 7 Maple Street, that a bridge did come down and barely missed a car of a person visiting the McLaughlins, my next-door neighbors. Now, of course, they should be concerned that maybe a roof will come down on their cars, but nevertheless, they are parking there. Where are they going to park when this project is completed? And is it not possible to have shared parking for people that are not necessarily working there, the businesses there? What are these people going to be called that are going to come down and sit, pedestrians? I haven't seen pedestrians anywhere. They'll all come down in their cars. Where are they going to park when they come down to sit on that grand plaza? And 3,000, I noticed that, you know, they have a little blurb in which they said they'd like to see 3,000 square feet of public amenity. Again, they're going to be able to park there, too? That is a major, major, significant problem in that square, and I'd like to see it addressed. Thank you. Thank you so much.
So we have, and we're not going to, when we get into our discussion, I don't think that other peoples should chime in.
Board-on-board discussion.
Board-on-board, right.
A colloquy.
It seems to me that we have two issues. And one is, what do we think about the building generally? And the other is, what do we think about the bonus? But obviously, if we were not to like the building, giving a bonus for a building we don't like is probably not, not, not...
Logical?
Logical. But I, maybe we should address this in, I mean, the way I look at the bonus is that this particular plan does not offer the public amenities which I was hoping for. I was hoping for that courtyard, the major green space to be a major public area. And it's not. And today we heard professional advice that if the wing of the building were moved down Elliot Street, presumably 15 to 20 feet, you would open up a significantly bigger, 20 feet, 25 feet?
I was going to go with the original contours of the current terrace, the one that people remember sitting on. So I don't know how many feet that is, but to preserve the current stone walls.
Well, you probably push it down to here and move that space to here.
We might actually have a plan.
But in any event, moving that down, you would open up a more, a better potential public space area for which a bonus would be more easily awarded. And I do think that when the state senator comes in and suggests that a Mass Works grant for this public amenity could be available, that that is, disregarding it, is a poor idea. So my inclination is that the bonus would be okay, and this is quite apart from the particular building. Quite apart from the particular building, the bonus, the 10% bonus would be okay justified by public open space, which would be reconfigured from this particular plan. This particular plan isn't satisfactory to me. I don't think, I have to agree, it doesn't support the award of a bonus. But there's enough area there that it could, assuming that you move that wing back, you also get a better sort of commercial courtyard, I think. Because right now, it's, the commercial courtyard is very constricted and you want to get people into it.
Yeah, I agree. I think the problem with the commercial courtyard now is that you're entering the commercial space below grade and that is not going to be something that attracts people to walk in. If you shift it back, take advantage of the grade changes to include some terracing, doesn't have to be exactly the way it is now, but that idea, so that people are able to enter those spaces in what's now the corner of the building shifted back at ground level instead of dipping down underground. I think that will make a huge difference to people. So, and because they have the opportunity to do terracing, it means they can still fit the parking under there. You remember, the parking's not coming up very high. So they should be able to reconfigure the terrace around the parking spaces, they can still get those in. We're not asking them to lose square footage by shifting that space along. But what it does do is it actually gains us two different types of spaces, a public space on that corner and then a slightly more private space for the residents to have what will feel more like a residential entry on the other side. And I think that could work out extremely well.
And I think that the resident space right now is not really necessary. It's somewhat wasted, it's valuable space and it's somewhat wasted.
Yes.
So that would be my, my inclination is that I, the, this plan wouldn't support the award of a bonus, but I can see awarding a bonus because I guess, we'd put it this way, that the building, currently in this lot, you could build a building with an FAR of two, if you were a straight commercial building. And when we wrote this zoning, we were actually intending there to be a fairly significant building. And this is in fact a fairly significant building. But I think that reducing it in size by 10% is not, I don't see that that is such a critical issue that one should say, oh, you've got to reduce by 10%, all would be fine. It seems to me that we have a lot of the same critiques. And I think that, I think that the devil being in the details, that if you go after these details, you can do an awful lot with the building.
As you look at how the building is sited, you know, we still have some issues with the setbacks. They've addressed the fourth story setback, they haven't yet addressed the third story setback. And in looking at the way the building is sort of cut in various areas on the site, so you've got a cutback here, you've got a cutback here, we may be able, again, and it'll partly depend on unit size and location, to address some of our other questions, as you say, with the details. I don't think it's the FAR so much as it is the actual massing that we're looking at. And I think that massing can be dealt with by simply following the zoning as was written. So looking at the setbacks, there's a couple of things that we still need the elevations to determine. A couple of the design standards really require them, but we're moving towards that. I think if we can say, look, you haven't met the public amenity standard, but we have a way that you can meet the public amenity standard, that starts to give direction that the developer sorely needs and our proposed solution should not affect what he needs to do. We also have to remember that in reducing the FAR, we're going to reduce the size of the units without necessarily reducing the number of units, given the current proposal. That could affect marketability and we want this proposal to be, or we want this building to be a successful project. So again, I'm not as worried about the FAR as I am about that significant public amenity and ensuring that the design standards, including the setbacks, are met. And I think we can do that. So I would be in support of...
So it was really the third story set, comes down to that third story setback.
The third story setback is part of it. Under a five, J5, we've got design standards, but a lot of those require elevations, so I can't...
But I mean, we've seen the elevations for the third story and it is just slightly set back because it's where the mansard goes.
What we haven't seen are elevations in a long time. We've seen elevations and perspectives that cover this portion, we haven't seen elevations that cover that. So there may still be some questions that come up along the track side. But certainly, the third story along Central Avenue is a real concern because of that sheer wall of height. I know there's an existing piece of a building that is that high, but it's not as long and it's not connected to this sheer mass of the corner. If we could push that back and we can get some of the third floor setbacks on the Central Avenue side, we may have a project that could work really well.
Well, push back the wing, you're saying?
Yeah, push back the wing.
So to make, to create the public amenity that's necessary for the bonus. And I agree with that. And to make the commercial space more...
More attractive.
More attractive and I think more saleable.
Saleable and functional. We still have to work out the landscaping on either side of here that is going to block the commercial windows.
Either side of here being the...
No, sorry, the driveway, yes.
The driveway, either side of the driveway.
Either side of the driveway, because that is blocking any view into that commercial space and that's problematic. So, because it means that this, there may be plate windows, but they're disguised, it's not allowing that part of the street.
I view that as a detail.
That's a detail.
It's a detail that...
But details are becoming important.
I think the details will become important. I don't, I don't, I think that we can work with this, with this current design. And I would think that what we should do is if we get a sense that, yes.
What I've heard, I like. Now why don't you two put it in writing and make a motion to give Mr. Connolly some guidance? It's going to be a big motion, it's almost like zoning, but now you're giving him marching orders, let's see if he does it.
Well, I suppose that, I suppose that that is a way of going about it.
While you're giving marching orders, how do you feel about the tower?
Well, I think, you see, I guess that's the, that's the deal. We're not going to, well, here we have, when is the deadline for that Mass Works grant?
August 27.
Okay. It seems to me that we should apply for a Mass Works grant using the best that we have.
That's fair enough, but Mr. Connolly and obviously Mr. Sherman wants to discuss that because they have to be party of it.
Well, exactly. But the, the Mass Works grant would pay for the, the public area and...
And maybe some infrastructure, I think.
And some, yeah, and some infrastructure.
I think the only thing it doesn't do, and I'd have to check on this, is I don't think you can bury utilities with it, which is unfortunate because that would be really cool. But I think there's a prohibition on that and we'll have to look that up. But yeah, it could handle the, any repaving of the street and the sidewalk and that actually could go well because then we could tie the materials to the same materials that they're using and to the rest of the materials in the Central Avenue district.
Brian said that the former traffic designer had plans to...
Beta, yeah.
Beta, we might be able to get for like 2,500 bucks.
The only trouble is finding that 2,500 bucks, we'll have to put in a reserve fund transfer unless the developer will wish to contribute to that, which would make it a lot easier.
Well, that is, what, it does seem to me that we're, we can do that, we can, if you're generally favorable to what we've discussed and ask, what's your view?
I can go along with that. I wouldn't take any vote on denying them the fact tonight as they asked for, I wouldn't take that vote tonight, for goodwill, I'd just...
Well, I don't want to, I mean, I see no reason to deny the bonus because I think that it can be incorporated into quite a reasonable development as long as there's stuff to be done.
It would be decarot for them to proceed and...
All right. Well, I, let's leave it at that.
Well, I'd like to hear from Peter Mullen and some of his cohorts there because they gave some very compelling arguments to vote no and forced to vote and to vote no tonight. So perhaps I'd like to hear back from Mr. Mullen, perhaps some of the others.
Well, let them mull it over and let's take it up again.
So are you looking essentially to give general consensus to Mr. McDermott to take back to his client that we are not, we are in favor of a bonus provided that you meet certain conditions that are not yet met? Are you looking for a formal vote? Mr. McDermott, how do you want to take this back to your client?
Well, I, we've got any voting decisions from the board, I'm not going to instruct you as to how you want to vote. I will report back to my client whatever it is you say.
Okay.
He isn't talking to me, he's backing forth to the other meeting, he may be here when you do that.
Right.
But I think I would rather have the board make its own decision.
I think that, I think that we should leave it at what we say and we should hopefully in the next two weeks get a consensus that we're going to redesign that public space and come up with something that we can get the state to pay for to the advantage of your client.
And the town.
And the town.
So you don't want to put that in a way of a vague motion to give them...
No, I mean, we can, we can, we can, I can try and write it up, but I'd like to tonight, but I, no, I can't write it up tonight.
No, then we can vote for it.
Well, we could, we could indeed.
Discuss it.
We could discuss it, but we want things to be going in the next two weeks. We want, we've got an August 24th deadline for our grant application.
27th.
The 27th. And it seems to me we should apply for a grant.
But the project doesn't have to be completely voted on the 27th.
And we will hear from, we will hear from Peter Mullen. Peter Mullen.
Thank you. My understanding of the Mass Works grant program, it can only be for public expenditures.
Yes, correct.
This court, this so-called public amenity that the developer is obligated to provide under the zoning bylaw, I don't believe will qualify for any grant.
That's correct, yes.
All right? If there's sidewalks or sewer lines or water lines or something like that that needs to be done, that would qualify for the grant.
All right, what's?
I think the grant is a red herring. And if you want the developer to modify their, his development, his proposal, his plan, I think you need to say, we're not going to grant the FAR bonus on what you've proposed.
Right, which is what we did say.
No, the only way you can say it is in a vote. That's the only way he will understand it. You know, it's not, it's not like you can't...
Well, I mean, we could deny this plan, but it...
No, no, deny the plan.
It isn't, well, we deny a bonus on the basis of this plan, but we think that there is a way to, for this plan to be redone so as to, as to qualify. And we think that it should as to possibly qualify.
No, no, I'll make this really easy, okay? We need four votes, right? If the developer does not provide a significant public amenity, which we have just defined as shifting the sticky outy bit down in order to preserve roughly the area of the current terrace and properly terraced it and create an excellent landscaping plan there, and I would add, adding the ability to put in the trees that the Concom are going to require as part of this, I'm not voting for an FAR. That's your one vote. If he doesn't make these changes, I'm not voting for an FAR. You don't have to have the, you know, if it were brought to a motion to pass the FAR right now, it would fail. So if he wants the FAR, he has to meet these conditions.
I would suggest to you that you can do the same thing by taking a formal vote, saying that, voting no, and then if he comes back with a plan that satisfies you, you can then approve it. But the only thing that Mr. Connolly has responded to is actual decisions by the board.
Well, I think that, I think that this is clear enough.
You're the chair.
He has a vote. What, the planning board, I can't speak for the other members, but I would vote for this proposed motion and Alex is going to come up with.
Right. And we're going to, right, we want, we want, look, we want, what we're wanting is not to deny something, we're wanting to get something that we can actually approve and we don't have it yet.
Peter's suggestion is a alternate method of doing it.
Well, he did, he sort of said, crack the whip, but...
I'm, I'm, you know...
It is one way of doing it, Peter.
We just passed two years.
I think that, I, I understand your viewpoint, I think that it's a little harsh.
It's two years.
Okay. So you went two weeks.
Mr. McDermott, do you feel that the direction you have gotten from the board is... Mr. McDermott, do you feel that the direction you have gotten from the board is clear enough for your client?
I understand, I represent.
Okay.
Can I add something else? That I, I'm a little disappointed that the developer did not meet with the neighborhood. The intent of suggesting that neighborhood meeting, and by neighborhood meeting, I mean abutters, people generally interested, was not necessarily to come to some sort of decision to present that to the board. It was a recognition that should this special permit be approved, Mr. Connolly and his team will have to be working with these neighbors, nearbyers, and the town as a whole for quite a long time during construction. And it seems reasonable to suggest, I think it was a strong suggestion, that he begin the process of working with people now as we're still in this process. So I'm disappointed that he was not able to, or whether he was not able to or chose not to, I don't know the answer to that, but that he did not meet the neighbors as a whole, absolutely.
I've been waiting for that for some time.
I thought you might.
Yes. First of all, my client was asked to attend a meeting with the neighbors. He said he would. After some pulling and chugging, he said he would. He agreed to have a meeting. He didn't agree to have a series of meetings. Now, Peter Mullen suggested to him that he go to another meeting, and my client told him, no, I'm going to go to one meeting. So we wrote, I don't have it with me, but we wrote a response to that to Mr. Mullen saying to him, you knew that we would go to one meeting. You chose the shape of the table and the invitees, not us. We came to that meeting. It was predisposed that four people would be there by Mr. Mullen, not by us. If that's some way to force us to go to a second meeting, it doesn't work.
You have an email exchange.
Then can I just suggest that I don't think that over the process of finishing off the special permit to whatever its conclusion, and then if it's a positive conclusion, moving into the construction process, I don't think one meeting is going to be enough. And I strongly encourage you to encourage your client to begin to build better relationships with the people that he is going to be working with and around for the next, A, however long the construction period is, and B, however long he retains his interest in the building. I'm assuming it will end up being some sort of condominium association, but I don't know how long it will take to put that in place. So for the sake of positive relationships for everyone, I strongly encourage him to find a way of meeting with the neighbors and the abutters on a more regular basis to set up a good process going forward. And you don't have to answer that.
Add.
Thank you, Alex. I think we should instruct, you should instruct Bill to work expeditiously with Senator Joyce and that team regarding the grant, and also with the architect and Steve Connolly along those same lines. Make it crystal clear what the people want. They want open space on the corner, significant open space on the corner.
What we're going to do is, it seems to me that since it has to be on public land, we're going to do the perimeter work on the public land of this thing in the grant.
We will need plans. We're going to meet those engineers.
Bill should do start on this tomorrow morning at 8:30.
Oh, I was going to go for 7:30 since he's not here.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think that we have a window of.
I will, I will, I will tell Bill that we really, I mean, we'll consider the bump out too. I think if there's more stuff down there in that area, we'll work more.
And the neighbors can be involved in that process also, because they have hearings on that.
Okay. We're going to continue this to next.
Next year.
The 9th.
I can't be here on the 9th.
23rd.
I, possibly, yeah, I mean, I have, I have one vacation this summer, and it starts on the 9th, and I'm not going to change.
Take your vacation.
That's fine.
23rd, and I don't think we've got anything else at the 23rd, so would you prefer 7:00 again?
7:00 o'clock would be fine, and I think by that time you may have, in fact, if you will, you will have applied for that grant by that point.
We will be getting off the bus.
Because it's the 22nd.
22nd?
22nd.
27th?
22nd.
Which day, what is it?
23.
22nd. For the Mass Works, the meeting to the 23rd at 7:00 P. M.
23, yes.
Just a thought. What if Mr. Connolly were to donate that corner of the property to the town so that the open space park would be the town's, therefore he wouldn't have to fund the improvements to it, and it would remain the town's? The town would have control of it forever after, and it could never be changed to another use. It would have to remain open space under the control of the town, but for Mr. Connolly's advantage, he wouldn't have to pay for the development of that open space. That would be.
Right. It could be done, but it couldn't be done in 23 days.
But maybe it can be part of the proposal if he's amenable to it, and then we can work it out after we get, you know.
I think that your, your, your grant programs generally don't say, well, we're thinking of getting some public land if you give us a grant.
We'd have to look at the provisions, but it's a good idea.
Well, hang on, but it is, it is, you know, that idea is a great idea because it certainly would, would get the public space for the public amenity. But that, of course, Mr. Connolly may not be able to provide public amenities since the.
I mean, it would be contingent.
In any event, well, we're looking.
It would, it would detrimentally affect our F A R.
It would indeed. It would indeed. There would be, it's something that we can, we can think about. Okay. But we're not going to do it without your consent.
Well, that would be a taking.
Exactly.
Right. And that's not our department.
No.
Please do not do taking.
All right.
Thank you.
So, continue.
Thank you.
All right. 36 to 50 Elliott Street, only an hour and 20 minutes behind schedule.
That's not bad.
But Ned is looking unflustered.
Why would I be flustered?
Alex was concerned that we kept you waiting too long.
I promised someone it would never happen again, and here it is.
That's an occupational habit that happens.
Okay, so.
Take those.
I should have, these should be passed around. So these are the different columns with the different colors on them.
Which colors do you like? Which colors does your architect say are right?
My architect is on his way in, and we can work off of these plans. We can put it up on the big screen.
Let's not put it up on the big screen. Let's find out what your architect likes.
I think the architect, preliminary preference is what was, what has been before the board already, but.
Which is number?
I will ask my architect.
That's been before the board already.
Mr. Donnie Garrity.
Which is the preferable?
Which is the preferable?
Number one.
Number one.
I like number one.
Number one, two, three. I'm missing scheme four. Does anybody?
Especially since there'll be no sun that ever shines on it. It'll be a little bit of bright.
Yeah, yeah.
Ah, that's, I was wondering where I put that one. Have you seen all the schemes?
Number three?
Let me pass them around. Three, four, five.
I like the street, purple street. I like the purple street.
These are now in order from one to five.
I have additional.
Oh, okay.
You have more schemes?
No, just additional. I'll test it when you.
There is nothing the board likes better than to argue over colors, so.
It's fine.
Let me see. That's three.
I like them all.
So that's why architects, you have architects. I don't like number two.
Scheme one is the original.
Well, I like the purple street. I like the purple street.
All right, I like scheme one. What do you like? Bernie likes them all. Mike likes number three.
I'm easy.
Either one or four.
One or four. So things are getting tight for Ed.
Go with three.
Good on Quincy. You won't see a single building with columns, all the, all the balconies, either built in or cantilevered.
So you wouldn't, you wouldn't like the white ones then because that kind of stands it out? I think the scheme three.
The darker the better.
Yeah, it kind of looks, kind of gives it a rural look too. Looks like someone in New Hampshire or something.
All right, so you've got, you've got the sense of the board.
Probably would rather be in New Hampshire than Chelsea.
But this isn't Chelsea.
They think, they think scheme one has looked like Chelsea. Amelie says one or four. I say one.
Well, I'll tell you why I'm rejecting.
Bernie says he likes all of them.
I'll tell you why I'm rejecting two and three, and that might help, is in two and three, the base of the balconies are not following the cornice lines anymore.
Right.
In one, four, and five, you still have the white of the cornice line continuing across the balcony, and I think that's important. I actually don't mind five, come to think of it. We should be your three, but with the cornice line coming across instead of the, the full balcony in the color. But I think it's important that the cornice lines continue across. So the nice thing about four is that the balconies are now the same color as the front so that they blend in. The nice thing about one is that they are not the same color as the front, so they stand out. So given the board's preferences have been stated both ways, I realize that's not much of help for you. But three, the, the problem with five and three is that you're introducing your roofline color, that green, bringing it down onto the facade, and that, although I like the color green, that doesn't look right, so.
Yeah, but.
Five is one or four.
Yeah. I do like four as well. I would go with that.
What?
I'll show you one and four together.
Oh, okay, fours are all right. Okay, four.
Four it is.
Four, four, okay.
Probably scheme four.
They'll create the, it's the same as every other building.
All right. Now, Ned, you have a presentation, you don't have a presentation.
No.
I don't have a.
Just tell us what you want us to do.
Some documentation.
Need to bend this?
At the last meeting, you asked me to prepare a draft of a report for the board's consideration in support of the project, zooming for the project, as a report to the Board of Appeals. We are before the Board of Appeals next Tuesday, July 31, for the variance application. I drafted.
August 1.
A report entitled Report of the Planning Board, July 26, 2012. It has seven items on it. And I know that Alex, you and I shared drafts over the last week, and I provided Bill Clark with copies, which I assume the board has seen, and so happy to discuss specific comments with respect to that. I have a, forwarded to the board as well, a revision to the site plan, which shows specifically the new front entryway. It shows the proposed setback from Elliott Street, which would be one of the two minor modifications to the variances that we've requested, first being a setback from 12 feet, which is the corner of the building closest to Elliott Street, now to six feet, which is to the corner of the overhang for the front entryway. And then second is an adjustment to the height of the building of one foot to accommodate one other thing, the loss of the bedroom, and to make the scale, the floor-to-floor height ratios more appropriate. So that the, the, the request for the variance would be for a maximum height of 46 feet from the mean finished grade prior to construction, rather than 45 feet from the mean finished grade prior to construction. I discussed that with Joe Prondak the other night. He concurred that that would be the, in terms of the, how the height would be measured, he concurred with the, with that calculation. We are still working with the, the town engineers on the final design of the stormwater drainage. We have some calculations on the final plan. There was consensus reached as to how the plan would be developed, subject to just the calculations and soils and whatnot, as to where the drainage, the, the water, the stormwater detention structures would be placed on the site below ground level. Just, she wanted the town engineer and the, and the town's consultant, engineering consultant want, want to see the calculations that support that design. But we think we're essentially there, and so I would ask the board to approve the report to the planning board, and that we will obviously be back for final site plan approval, and included in the, in the final review would be those, the report of the town, of the town engineer, that the drainage, in fact, is adequate, and that we will have a construction management plan, which will detail how the construction will be managed without impact to the, to the town streets and to the neighborhood. You know, time of, time of day of deliveries of trucks, materials, and whatnot, and we'll have that prepared before, when we're back for final vote on, on site plan approval.
And you said your meeting with the Z P A was August 1st? What time?
July 31.
July 31st.
7:30 in this room.
Your, your conditions, you list the draft conditions, and I, if anyone is around, they should look at the draft conditions, maybe, maybe Bill could post these. I'll try and remind him. Because we want to make sure that your conditions are, that everyone is satisfied that the conditions that they've been agreed to are listed here, so we don't have any.
Right. And then that regard, I have also provided you a draft, set of conditions. It's a draft dated 7/12, 18/12.
And these have been distributed.
And they've been distributed.
And if you get more, you'll.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. And in any event, these conditions are a draft that is not part of the report.
Okay.
And they, but we would present those for inclusion in the, in the Board of Appeals decision.
Right. The report, that's what the, so I, I think that with, we've got further questions from the board. I've read this, this report. In fact, I've helped write it, and I'm.
Yes, yes.
I'm satisfied, and I think we could instruct Bill Clark to sign it for us. Yes, Ed.
Ned, is this a steel frame building?
No.
Wood frame.
Wood frame.
It got in the balconies. I went down to Walson and Rock Quincy and so forth past few days, looking at the high rises, various high rises down there. I didn't see one anywhere that had columns on the balconies. Balconies were either recessed into the structure of the building or they came out, and I can't keep, can't believe it, can't believe it. So this looks like, to me, like it's in the Dark Ages, they haven't had the style of a balcony, and I wish you, somebody could defend it.
Well, we've got the arch, that's what architecture for. What do you think?
With a wood frame building, it's a little more expensive to detail a cantilevered system for a balcony. One way you can do that is if you recess the balconies inside of the footprint of the building. Sullivan's didn't want to take that approach for these. When you do cantilever wood frame, a couple of other things come up, flashing and thermal break, because what's going to happen is the framing of the, of the balconies will have to come into the building. So with the addition of the stretch code, that's a, a great thermal break for the, for the building itself, but then again, for water protection from coming in the skin, it's also an issue. So it becomes a very expensive detail, just in terms of structure and water protection as well.
And I, I think in, just in addition to that, the handicapped accessibility requirements require fairly, the balconies to be extended quite far off the building for, to accommodate wheelchair turnaround on the balcony. So that's a lot of weight to support. The cantilever system itself is significant, is significant weight and a lot of weight to support just for the balconies. So the structural, structure is necessary with the wood frame to have the, the vertical support system that you see.
I think too. I think too, looking at scheme four, which we just gave consensus that we liked, is that, well, not, I didn't say, you know, total consensus, just said general consensus.
It isn't both.
Any rate, that's why I said consensus. The fact that it's going to be the same color as the collaboration means you're going to be less likely to notice the columns, they're going to blend in. Now, had the, we'd chosen the white color scheme, those columns would jump out.
Terrible scheme.
I think, I think also, the landscape plan is going to have a lot to do.
Right.
To mask the visibility of the vertical structures.
Right, we're not seeing any planting some of those.
We have a planting plan, but it's not colored, it doesn't, but there's a significant amount of planting in front of the building that will mask, to some degree, those vertical structured elements as well.
You did show us elevations at the last meeting, that had the landscaping in there, and I did notice that quite a bit of the building was hidden now. It will take time for the trees to grow to that height, so there'll be a period where you see more of the building than you will eventually.
Well, you certainly will see the vertical elements at higher elevations.
Yes.
Maybe second and third floor, but you won't see necessarily the vertical elements from the ground all the way up to the same extent.
All right, hearing no further questions from the board.
I'll move that the board approve this report of the planning board to be forwarded to the zoning board of appeals for their meeting on July 31st.
With an appropriate covering letter by Mr. Clark, saying that the board has by vote approved this report.
That's exactly what I said, yes, my motion.
Okay.
Sorry.
You'd be a little presumptuous there, weren't you?
What?
We approve by vote.
We're about to vote, my motion was for us to vote.
Well, that's just a motion, it's just a motion.
Yeah, that's just.
You're writing the letter about the approval vote for the vote.
No, 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 that's part of the motion.
It has to be part of the motion.
I second it.
So now you get to have discussion.
No discussion.
No, we don't have any discussion, we're going to vote it up or down. No, we can, we can discuss. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
Thank you very much, we appreciate all of the good work of this board.
We look forward to the site plan review, we'll be asking you tons of questions.
I'm sure, we'll be ready for it.
Okay, well, this is good.
Yeah.
Now, look at this draft of assisted living, you don't have to, but you can, if you like, assisted living residence development, it's something that I drafted in the past couple weeks. It's been typed up.
Yes.
We have a new plan, which I haven't seen until today.
And is there, it appears from their new plan that they are in agreement with you in using the town road and access road?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
I would like to say that, as you know, at the last meeting, I was exploring alternatives that would allow them to use their preferred road. When I was driving down Randolph Avenue, I noticed a truck actually wanting to make a left.
Yeah.
Onto that, from Randolph going south.
Yeah.
And I noticed that in order to make the left on that, they actually made the left from the right-hand lane going south, so crossing all three lanes of traffic to make it up. And I said, I saw that, I said to myself, you know what, they really need to be using the town of Mills and side access road.
So what, yeah, they're going to do it. Now, what I would like you guys to authorize me to do is to continue to work with Jason on a draft zoning, and we will then alert you further in August about whether we're going to go for that August 9 deadline or not. And if we are, we may, we may do something in August together, as a board.
I've read this.
Yeah.
Briefly. Is there any besides?
Oh, and here's Jason. How you doing?
Hi, Jason. Welcome to board.
Besides item seven, is there any other item that specifically addresses the site that we're talking about? Early on, you said to me you were going to write this, so then tailor itself to this site. Is there anything beyond seven that does that? I mean, seven to me does it.
The signalized intersection seems to me to be a killer.
Although, did Bill just say that he had somebody else's?
Well, you have that frontage on the state highway, plus the signalized intersection. So, I mean, you know, if you were way down one of those side streets, you still have that, the frontage on the, on the state highway, which.
They have frontage though.
They do.
Yes, they do, they own one of the lots.
And they're going to, yeah, they're going to have a house that they're going to tear down, so people can look up and see this thing sparkling on the hill.
Which will be beautiful, I'm sure.
All right, we've done draft zoning.
So basically, seven is the item that ties it to this site.
It's the definition, the first paragraph. That first paragraph is the definition that.
Right. In a residential district on a lot, including a combination of adjacent lots with at least 100 feet of frontage on a state highway, containing at least, you know.
I just, while you're reading it, do we want to consider whether or not we want to restrict the lots by date of ownership? Do we want to prevent people from assembling further parcels?
I don't know.
Well, not one, we could do that during the public hearing process, but we want.
I mean, we can do it in the next, well, let's think about that. That has nothing to do with you, Jason.
Yeah, you're safe, we're not, not anything that would change you.
Okay.
It's just, so what happens when you define something like this, where you say including a combination of adjacent lots, is, somebody may then read the zoning once it's passed and say, aha, I'm going to assemble myself some lots.
Well, except they're about to buy this other lot.
Oh, that's right, you haven't bought that, never mind. Ignore that. We'll have to reconsider that.
Right, well, we'll think about this one. But you can see, with access to the state highway at a fully signalized intersection, which later on is, I didn't know what, if Bill were here, he might give me better lingo for that, but it, I did, later on in seven, say a fully signalized intersection was an intersection with a traffic signal providing regular red and green intervals for the intersecting streets, which.
So you've given a term in the beginning and defined it later on, I think that's reasonable.
Yeah.
The design standards, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I may have a look at those.
And you can, if you've got, if you've got thoughts to, to change them. This is a, you're going to, is this something you can work with, Jason, or are you here to?
I was going to ask, we did have a couple hours to go through it, our council did not have a chance to look through it.
You've got plenty of time.
So our approach was going to be to, over the next day or two, mark it up.
Right. Send it to me, and we'll get, we'll get something up. Yeah, that's exactly what I was hoping you'd do.
Okay, great.
And I think that your scheme shows that you can, you can fit a building on the site with 40-foot setbacks, and.
Alex, you mentioned that they have 100-foot frontage on Randolph Avenue.
This house, this house, they're going to buy this house.
Yeah.
It has 75.
That's, that's one of my comments.
But, but you're.
We don't own the right of way.
Oh, you don't?
But if they sell this house in the future.
Well, they're not going to, they're going to keep it.
They can't, because they'll be in violation of special permit.
Well, they can, they can tear down their assisted living facility, and so, no, they couldn't, it would be subject to the special permit. Okay, so, okay, well, that is, you don't own the right of way.
It's owned fee simple by an unrelated.
Okay, so that is something I'm going to have to address, because I assumed that the, I assumed that it was your land.
So you have access over the right of way, but you don't actually own the town.
Okay, so well.
Just like the neighbors do.
I'm going to, I'm going to have to work on that, but thanks for telling me.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, on the landfill access road.
Yeah.
Would that become a public way then, if it's improved?
Improvement.
Will it have a, will it have a street name, will it become frontage?
It might. It's not going to be frontage, but it's going to be, it's going to, who knows, it's going to be owned by the town, fixed up by the developer as a significant public event thing, and you're going to landscape it, and you're going to have a nice sign there. And you're going to have a beautiful vision as you look up the.
The mountain.
The mountain, but not drive up, you're going to just look up and see this.
All these golf balls coming.
Yes.
I have a question regarding the fire, the fire department, fire chief, has he looked at any of these plans so far?
He has not, and they've changed every week, so.
I understand, but I'm wondering if he's going to want a improved second means of access up here on the.
Where the right of way is?
Yes, yeah.
We have no issue meeting, if you think this plan has been approved to the point where I can go to the fire department, that's, that's great with me, to get information.
I think that we've got to look at it a little bit. But obviously, the fire department would be important. He might want to have a gravel roadway of some sort going around the back of the building.
The existing access road, I don't think it's wide enough.
Yeah, but they're going to, it's going to be, it's going to be improved, at the expense of the developer.
Go to the discussion, the urban engineering department.
To the specification of the Milton engineering department.
We could apply for Masworth's grant next year for them.
We could do that.
So it'll be fully improved, and the people that currently utilize it will continue to do so?
No one uses it.
The people that live on Randolph Avenue use it?
Not the access road, it's blocked off.
Oh, excuse me, I jumped over to the right of way.
You're going to try and convince the O'Neills to use your new road, the access road.
No, I'm talking about the.
And the people further down the hill are going to continue to use the right of way.
Okay, that was, that was the answer to my question, thank you.
Have you spoken to anybody in Slutman's office about the access road?
Yes, yeah, we had some informal discussions, and they seem open to allowing the use of it for this, for this purpose.
Is it used now for any purpose at all now?
I don't see any traffic other than.
Only to access the wind turbine.
Yes.
So they access, isn't there a flare in the landfill that someone was in and maintains it? And aren't there utility forms?
On the Milton side, I'm not sure. I know there's one on the Quincy side, but I wasn't sure about the Milton side.
Before we meet again, I'd like to have some clarity on the two accessways. Right of way, which you don't, which you don't own.
Correct.
Can you improve that if you have to? But the town use, use of the access road may be, I don't know, there's something in the future that we, mention to the town to have access to and back, I don't know.
Well, the town is going to own it.
They store stone, tree damage and stones, they need access.
But John Cronin says that it was constructed to handle heavy trucks.
Yeah, I believe this actually came up when we were talking about the wind turbine originally, when it was in front of us, and then it has in fact been constructed, it's just not.
I think.
Haved the whole way, but it's been constructed to hold heavy trucks.
Where's the water main coming from? Is it going to be going from the access road or from the right of way?
The right of way.
Water main?
Yes.
Presumably, they already have water there, too.
There's, I believe there's water that goes up to the single-family home that's.
Well, there must be water going up to the stables.
Right.
I'm not sure if it's water main especially for a high.
No, there'd be a new water main installed, yes.
But you don't have, you don't have the rights to the right of way to put the water main in, do you?
Yes.
So you have full access rights to the right of ways, not just to use it, but also to maintain, improve, et cetera, et cetera.
Right, so in the end, they'll still, O'Neill will still have the right to access his property.
Either that, or he will sign off for use of the access road, because using the access road would probably be preferable for them.
Okay.
It would probably improve the value of their property.
Yeah, we have not, we spoke to him early in the process, not in the last two weeks when we definitively decided to use the access road, so.
Might be worth another conversation.
Sure.
Yeah. And some of these are details that won't be hammered out completely yet, we're not expecting you to have formal agreements signed before we go to town meeting. It's just having the conversations earlier is always better than somebody standing up at town meeting and saying, but what about that?
Right.
Does it need benefit to an overlay?
An overlay is, is basically what this is. We are not changing the underlying zoning, so it is an overlay.
Who owns it all that time? The town of Milne actually owns a parcel in between the right of way and the access road. O'Neill's property does not about the access road.
What there is, I think the confusion is, is it town access road, then is it private access road?
Yeah.
Private access road, the O'Neills have rights to.
But it may be that they will come off your driveway somehow, rather than go right through your development.
Well, the Verrill pool made the back of O'Neill's property very difficult to develop at all.
Do you have an issue with them accessing it through your, through the right of way and through your driveway?
No.
Well, then that's not a problem, so.
Right, I think that they would, I think that this is, you know, I have to look at it, and I've got to review this zoning, and you're going to get.
I would get design.
Design standards, we're going to add significant public benefit, which you're going to achieve by reconstructing the access road and landscaping it, so that it looks just like the place in Stone.
Sure.
Okay, what else? You're going to deal with, we're going to work with this, and then we're going to see how we get the board to determine whether or not this submitted to the, to the selectment as an foreign article.
What is the timeline on that?
August 9th, for the, they don't seem to want to have a October town meeting, but if we submit an article, they seem to want to have a December town meeting, but if we submit this, by August 9th, they're going to have an October town meeting.
Yeah.
Unless they convince you to push it over.
No, the October town meeting is what we need, really need.
All right.
From a timing perspective.
Well, this is, this is, we can do it.
Yeah.
We can do it, and we're going to, we're going to try and do it. And I do think that we've got the basis of a placeholder.
Oh, I agree, and in fact, you know, we could move to put this on now, saving us having to have a second meeting before the 9th, and then with the understanding that we'll be making revisions.
With the understanding that we could.
And having the public hearing process.
We could withdraw it on the 9th, couldn't we?
We could withdraw it on the 9th, if for some reason.
If we submit, if you authorize me to submit an article, which I would have distributed, and then on the 9th, if we take another vote, as to whether or not to affirm the submission, but that way we don't have to meet again before the 9th.
I think that's reasonable, I mean, because we do have the opportunity to withdraw.
You've been able to get out dispersity revisions?
What?
You're dispersing revisions, please?
We'll get the, yeah, the revisions will be dispersed.
And then on the 9th, because we meet after 5 o'clock, once we all sit down in public session and review the revisions.
But they will be, the revisions will be distributed, so there'll be plenty of time for discussion on the 9th.
Yeah.
It's simply we will have submitted it by 5 o'clock on the 9th, and then.
Less meeting than time.
If, and it will be a placeholder, it would, we'll be able to change it.
Between August 9th and the October town meeting.
Between August 9th and whenever they finalize the warrant.
So it may be that during the public hearing process, other people come up with changes as well, so, yeah, we do have, we would have the opportunity to change it. I would move that we authorize Alex Whiteside to submit this draft for the August 9th.
This draft as revised?
This draft as revised, thank you, for the August 9th, 5 p.m. deadline for the October town meeting.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So, Jason, we're cooking, and we'll be in touch.
When do you envision the public hearing to be? Also in, also in August?
Probably early September.
Early September sounds about right. I'll have to check the.
We'll check the matrix.
Yes, exactly.
All right, I'm going to entertain, yes.
No, not yet, I just wanted to say one thing. So Bill and I will set up interviews for the August 9th meeting for all three of our consultants for the master plan. I want to apologize, you guys have gotten rather scattered information, I hadn't realized that Bill was. I hadn't realized that Bill was going to be testifying for as many days as he was. So he and I and Gene, the three of us did not have as good a communication as we should do because I realized- I didn't realize he was out of the office. So I'm just going to take the weekend to go back through and make sure that you do have all of the emails from the people that had submitted. There were some people who'd submitted emails quite early and those got left in the shuffle. I'll confirm with Gene and Bill. And you should get something at the beginning of the week confirming who exactly requested the other master plan. And then we can make that decision on the 9th as well.
Are we still going to go through the voting process on the three?
Absolutely. We're going to have an interview so we can hear all three of them. And then we'll be able to decide which one we want. But in looking at the proposals, Bill and I felt that it might be important for all three of them to be interviewed. There's only three. If there were seven, I'd definitely be looking for a short list. But with only three, I think it seems fair. And you should all have had the work samples by now. Two of the firms put their work samples on CD. The third firm sent debut links in the body of their submission.
There were three CDs, weren't there?
There were three CDs. All three of them have electronic copies of the PDFs. Two of them, VHB and Brown Walker, have electronic versions of their work samples. Community Opportunities put links to the work samples in the body of their submission.
All right.
And that's what I got.
Okay. And I have- is the most adjourned on the floor?
Yes, it is.
Adjourned.
Yes.
Listen. There's no way back game tonight. Can I still go to that?